And welcome to the May third, two thousand and ten Goffstown Board of Selectmen's Meeting. This evening Scott Gross will not be here. And the first item is, I'm ready to rise so we can.
Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The minutes are four twenty-six, we're gonna hold off until we have a full board. Next item is announcements. And we do have one announcement that I'm aware of, which is the, issued by the Goffstown Police Department. It's a traffic alert, uh, road closure, South Mass Road. And it's an immediate press release. And the Goffstown Police Department of Public Works announces the closing of South Mass Street for utility work related to the South Mass Road drainage improvement project. The closure will start Monday, May third, which was today, and is expected to last until Friday, May seventh. South Mass will be closed during the day from nine AM to two PM and reopen each night. Local traffic will be allowed access within the project area on South Mass Street. Commercial vehicles and commuter vehicles needing access for travel should use East Union Street detour. Just would like everybody to know, also at the town's website, um, goffstown dot com, uh, you can get, uh, any updates or check to see if there's any changes to those times or the schedule. Uh, you can also, uh, contact Alex Canon, Public Works Department, at four nine seven three six one seven, extension twenty-seven, with any questions. Thank you. And all for being patient while that project goes forward. Are there any other announcements, Sue?
That's it.
Okay. Seeing no further announcements, our next order of business would be public comment. And at this time, do we have any members of the public would like to be heard? Please come up to, sit down by the mic and we'll need your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Jenny Boyajus. I'm a condo owner at Timberwood.
Yep.
And, uh, I just have, uh, a couple of questions regarding four eighty-four Mass Road. Uh, I understand it is zoned for industrial and commercial, or not industrial, but commercial and, um, oh, senior moment here. And it's, uh, also, uh, someone is living on the property.
Commercial residential?
And I was wondering if there's anything that we can do, 'cause it is an eyesore, of all the junk that is distributed on that property.
You said four eighty-four?
I believe that's the number that, uh, I read on the mailbox.
It just says you, if you were coming out of Timberwood, went right across the street?
It, it's not across the street, it's right along the, uh, drive as you come, uh, out of, uh, Timberwood. It's on the right-hand side.
I know, so, okay.
There's several vehicles parked there and there's tires all over the place and anything you can think of strewn all over the yard. Is there an ordinance, a town ordinance that, that?
Have you been in touch with code enforcement officer?
No, this is my first, uh, I just feel that it's degrading all the condos in the area because of this unsightly. And who would I have to contact again?
Derek Horn, uh, since you've come here, we'll, uh, four eighty-four, um, we'll contact him for you.
Oh, good.
Uh, and if you can give your name and, uh, contact to the town administrator or to, uh, Catherine.
Is there anything that we can do as condo owners, or several people concerned about this, uh?
It's part of the?
Property.
Complex?
Yes.
No, 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 wait.
The home itself that you're talking about is not part of the?
Is down at four eighty-four.
Yeah, but, but it's not part of the condo complex.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
The private home.
Right, 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 and I mean, what we, what we need to do is, uh, we have to have code enforcement go through this because, I mean, we have to find out what the zoning is, what it, what effectuates it, and that's, that's, that's the proper way to go for them.
Um, there's several vehicles and now I noticed there was a bus there parked. I guess he does, uh, bodywork or some sort of bodywork on, uh, vehicles there. But, I mean, what drops on the ground, I think stays on the ground, whether it's tires or whatever. I did notice that the, um, there was a, um, motorhome parked there for several months. And, uh, it was moved this weekend, so I don't know whether they may be on vacation or somebody's using it or what. But there must be at least, uh, five vehicles there parked all the time.
So this is when you come out of Timberwood and you take a right towards Manchester, is that lot right there?
That, that one right there.
He won't miss it, he, Derek, Derek won't miss it.
Okay. We'll have the code enforcement officer check into it.
And who, will you be contacting? I'm sorry, I can hear.
Code enforcement officer.
Derek Horn.
Eric Corn?
Derek.
Derek Corn.
Works upstairs in that corner of the building.
Okay. And, uh, would you, could you, uh, contact me or the board?
He, he'll be in touch with you.
He will? Okay.
Right, he'll be in touch with you.
But I thought that maybe the town would have noticed it by now that it's such a mess that, that, that you would, uh,
Well, this is how.
Say, clean it up.
Well.
He may be working on it, we don't know until we.
That's right, it's very possible, he might be working on it, we don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
That is all I need to know, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Seeing no further public, um, next item will be the town administrator's report.
Thank you. Uh, your weekly meeting schedule's in your packet and it looks like a late week, historic district meets on Wednesday at six thirty. Consensus folder tonight includes AP warrants, employee status reports for two seasonal DBW labors and a DBW intern, an event permit, uh, for St. Anthony's School Car Wash at one ninety-seven Mass Road. And they have been given the DES best practices sheet to follow. Right to inter for Daniel Leonard at West Lawn Cemetery, section nineteen ninety-two, lots one sixty-three A and one sixty-four. And an agreement and MOU with the school district.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Is there a DWI grant thing in there, or was that something else?
A what?
A DWI.
The, uh, the grant for, um, the DWI patrol, I'm sorry, I just thought I read that in the consensus holders, was there paperwork on that?
In the signature folder? I thought that was last week's.
Oh, maybe it just needed some signatures.
Yes. A vote was already taken, so it probably just needs a signature.
Right, it's just in there, right, it's just in there for signature. Your motion?
So?
Your second?
Second on the consensus folder.
Any discussion on the consensus folder, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The assessor recommends, um, two thousand and nine tax abatements for map five, lot thirty-eight dash twenty-five. Map eight, lots thirty-six dash three dash one and forty-eighty. And map fifteen, lot thirty-eight. And he recommends denial for two thousand and nine tax abatements for map six, lot seventeen B dash sixty-eight. Map eighteen, lot fifty-eight B dash one dash eight. Map twenty-one, lot fifty-two. Also, the, uh, land use change tax lien release for map thirty-six, lot thirty-eight dash one.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At tab four D in your packets, uh, following input from last week's meeting and also, um, emails received and a chart received, um, that graphically portrays what's happening to the tax rate versus what was expected to happen with tax rate. A new insert for the property tax bill is in your packet. Um, I did talk to the chairman and he liked the chart included on it, but he would go with whatever the board's desire was on that. Uh, and we'd like to get a decision tonight, so we can go out to print and have it ready for insert.
I only had one question.
Mm-hmm.
On the second sentence, the word vote, is, should that be votes?
Second sentence.
In the, uh, second paragraph?
Second sentence. Votes of the March twenty-ten annual meetings.
Oh, because we pluralized those two meetings?
Two meetings, should it be, shouldn't it be votes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought at the last meeting, we had talked about just ending it sincerely, not adding thing, anything below that.
We did, um, because what was below, the chart that was submitted at that time raised more questions than it answered. This is a new chart.
I think it's just the same thing.
Okay, I thought it.
My own opinion.
More clearly, well, you know.
I thought that's why we were referring them to the website, to have anything like this on the website.
We can put that on the website, the chairman just thought it might be nice for people who don't have access to the website to kinda see a graphic portrayal.
I thought we already discussed that.
We discussed a different chart, right, and you, you're correct, we said, let's just end it, keep it simple. And we could do that, we can take this chart and put it on the website.
I did review a chart that the chairman prepared that was doing something similar to this, is using the rates that are on this chart. But the homeowner would input their assessment and then they could see what the assessments would have been at the four points. To me, that was a little bit confusing to see the, the final dollar val- value that, and was simplified just for everybody to see the same chart and there's, there's nothing for the property owner to input. And I submitted it as an example, an alternative example, I think, intending that it could be part of the web display, not necessarily the letter going out. So, I have no desires one way or the other, and I'll be happy just as long as it's published, I think, helpful information.
Are you talking about a different?
Yeah, this chart.
Oh, this chart?
I was the one who submitted this.
Okay.
As an alternative to the one we saw from the chairman.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But, but Slough and Pierce submitted it for the website and, but I included it here, 'cause it did fit and I didn't know whether the board wanted to consider it.
I'll make a motion that we send the, the letter.
The top part.
Minus the other information and include that in the website.
In the website? And so I'll enlarge, if we go along with that, then, um, I'll enlarge the type and spread it out more over the page, so it'd be easier to read. Is that board's design?
You're gonna have to have a reference, though.
What do you mean?
Okay, no, there is, there is, there is a reference to the website out there on, in the bottom of the first paragraph. All right, is there a second on that?
Yes, uh, second, this letter being sent for Ted's bill.
Minus the chart?
Minus the chart.
Everything below.
Yes, there was chart and explanation.
Right. Okay. Only from, only to where it says sincerely Goffstown Board of Selectmen's. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, at tab four E in your packets, you have the two thousand and ten CIP schedule. And the due date for submission for departments and committees was, is May fifteenth. Does the board wish to review, uh, all the submissions prior to that? If I told everyone that if you did, they'd have to get it in by this Friday, so you'd have it for next Monday.
Where are the, okay, there's, uh, fire department, public works, another, another day, library, parks and police and, uh, administration.
Right, does anybody see any issues with this schedule?
I think Sue was trying to make the point, do we want the department heads to inform us first rather than them going directly to the CIP committee?
Last year, you asked to see all the submissions before they went to CIP.
Aye.
If you still wanna do that, then I, you'd see them next Monday.
Well, I mean, we could have a copy of them before they go, or we could have those come back to us from our rep room CIP as they're presented.
You could do that, yep.
That's another way we could do it.
I, I would prefer letting the department heads, uh, submit what they feel is required and.
Then we'll get it back from our, our.
And we'll get it back from our rep attending.
Who's your CIP rep?
I think it's, is it, is it you, Nick?
Okay.
I thought before we jump forward, until, so that's May fifteenth, they, they gotta have it.
To the CIP committee.
To the CIP committee, what, can't we just have it?
To staff and then staff puts it into the worksheet and then they have it for their.
Can't we just have it mailed to everyone at the same time, emailed out? I mean, what's, I don't see, I don't think it's a secretive process.
Well, no, 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 it's very public, I mean, you could, but.
But if, so if they're submitting it, could we just have a copy emailed to us?
I submit by the time they, they actually brief in June and July, um, there's modifications to that CIP.
No, I know, I'm just saying, but if, as far as the initial, the initial request going out, whatever, whatever they're requesting, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if I could just have it emailed, I know I would like at least a copy of the email, whatever they're doing.
So do you want the revised worksheet where they're starting, or do you wanna see each individual CIP submission?
I would love to see, I would love to see starting, starting, at this point in time.
Just the worksheet, then?
Yes.
Okay.
You can just, you don't have to mail it to me.
No, I mean, I just, I'm just looking for an email, that's all I'm looking for, the sheet.
Okay. At four F in your packets, you have draft ordinances. As you probably recall, in previous action, the board accepted the Highway Safety Committee recommendation for yield signs on Chetel and Coles at Lynchville. And in order to implement that, you need ordinances, so the chief has written up ordinances that appear at four F. I wanted you to have an opportunity to review those before we scheduled the public hearings. Did anyone have any issues with the draft ordinance?
These are pretty much standard for all the ones that we have.
Yep, but if you wanted to make any changes, I'd rather them be done before we go to public hearing, 'cause that's what we'll be submitting for the public hearing.
Any comments?
Fine either way.
Fine, that's that.
Okay, good. Are those dates good for you also? The chief is around those two dates and I didn't wanna schedule it, 'cause, um, on the date of the holiday, 'cause it has to be like seven to fourteen days apart, so. We've got it on the twenty-fourth and June seventh for the.
Yeah, well, my schedule's gonna be in June.
We have meetings scheduled, though, so we should be safe.
I know, you're, I know, you're here.
Okay, so I'll go forward and schedule those. Uh, a follow-up on Glen Lake. I've talked to someone at Fishing Game last week and he informs me that the boat ramp is not a state boat ramp. Uh, hasn't been since they sold it to the town nineteen seventy-seven. But the state does use the boat ramp to stock fish and for marine, marine patrol when needed. If the town of Goffstown, I asked him what would happen and how would it impact their operation if we chose to restrict Glen Lake to the use by, uh, for town residents only. And he said that the state would not stock fish if it was restricted to town only. I also asked him about fees, if we charge parking fees for non-residents. And he said, uh, you will probably have an issue with the fishermen, I guess that was attempted at Bear Brook State Park and the fishermen, uh, were very upset about the fishing licenses, as Selectman Devanz, I had pointed out at that last meeting when we discussed this. Um, and so Bear Brook State Park, where they have a staff person there all the time anyway, chose to not charge a fee if you showed your dr- uh, hunting, uh, fishing license. We're not in that situation, we don't have anyone down there, nor could we support having someone down there all the time. So, that option, um, wouldn't be open to us to look for fishing licenses. So that's where it stands with them. Um, I asked him, I told him what the problems were and why we were considering those options that residents brought forward. And, um, he mentioned how they cut down on vandalism and abuse of the area on the river in Merrimack, uh, on the Merrimack River in Hooksett. And they installed lighting and that cut down on the activities, nighttime activities and the littering and the abuse of the area substantially. And the residents had asked for that, and it worked.
Was that a, uh, a formal beach area? I, I've not been there.
Hooksett Village you're talking about.
Yeah, he said it's, was improved immensely, the, um, state boat ramp on the Merrimack River in Hooksett.
Yes, Hooksett Village. When you go, when you go across the river.
Okay, thank you. It's right near the dam.
Yeah.
So, so they're saying, if I could, if I just wanna recap this then, so the boat ramp is not owned by the state?
No.
That's by the town. And of course, Marine Patrol used that for when, for when they do monitor and they said they won't stockfish. What's the last, do they stockfish regularly there every year? Is it, it's a yearly piece? Okay. And as far as, I'm not sure what the whole Bear Brook and fishing license, I wouldn't understand what that was, what the connection was there, they're saying that.
They were gonna institute a fee to park at Bear Brook.
Okay.
When anyone came in.
And who's the, who's the, the town?
State.
The state, okay.
But they, the fishermen saw that as double taxation, because they already paid for a fishing license and now they're gonna pay to get into the park also.
Because it's a state park?
Mm-hmm.
Not, but, but in our case, we're not a state park.
Right.
And it doesn't make a lot of sense, because I go to the state down at the beach and I pay to park at the state park. What's the difference?
Well, they paid for their fishing license.
I understand that, that's to go fish.
Right.
We're talking about parking, right?
So they were accessing Bear Brook to fish only, and so they felt it was a double taxation.
I don't get the connection myself personally, 'cause once they, like, once again, if you go down to Hampton Beach and you go to a state park, you pay to, you pay to enter the park.
But you probably, that doesn't mean you have a fishing license too and you're gonna fish there.
I go to Greenfield State Park and there's fishing there and I can take a canoe, I'm charged for use to the park, just a thought.
He was just expressing what happened, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just explaining, I, I don't get the connection, that's all I was trying to say there. Okay.
But at a minimum, we have the carry-in, carry-out, um, provision in our ordinance. And yet we have trash trailers down there, 'cause we found the carry-in, carry-out didn't work for trash. So at a minimum, the board should consider probably changing the ordinance and doing away with that provision, since it didn't work. Or the other option is take away the, um, trash receptacles, but again.
Now, we were checking with the idea of what general public is, did we get a reply back on that?
Um, no, one person that did call me when I was out, um, said he's calling back tomorrow.
Okay.
He's another person from the, um, Fishing Game. This one was more on the law enforcement stocking and the other guy's more administration, so, waiting for his call back.
We also have the issue, though, we have the lake water tested.
The state does the testing.
Program. Now, if that made that, uh.
Would they continue to provide that service if?
Right, if it was.
It was restricted, I don't know.
Okay, that's another thing that, another possibility, too.
You know, we're checking with who regarding what, what the, what the term general public is? You said with, who did you say we're checking that with?
Well, we already have a letter in the file from HUD.
From HUD, which says?
That a public kindergarten is a public use.
Okay, so, well, we were talking, if public use could be, could it be, can just construed as a town, or do we have to go beyond that, was, was my question.
They're not gonna go there.
But we've already gone there, because we've done that with a kindergarten. Okay. All right, so there's no sense, I mean, at this point, we're saying, we're, at this point then, we're saying we've already made a decision of the town that public use could just be con- uh, confined to just the town. We have a public kindergarten on its property.
Well, that, that's gonna be up to the school district as to whether or not they expand that, that's totally up to the school district, we have no control over that.
So right now, if I was in Manchester, could I go bring my child to the public kindergarten?
That's not what I said, well, I, I said that it's up to the school district.
I know what you said, I'm just saying that part of it right now would be that we've, we've, we've already made, made it that not, that open to the public beyond Goffstown.
I think they make exceptions, that if you live in Manchester and you wanna go to that school, that you have, you pay a fee.
That's a possibility.
I think there are a few students within the district that live in Manchester, that attend school in the district and they pay a fee. I could be wrong, but at times it's done.
Probably the school board endorses that.
That's totally up to them, we have absolutely no control.
So, I'll check with that, so we're saying that this, this, you were saying that kindergarten could be possibly open up to anyone who wants to pay a tuition fee for that kindergarten?
That's not.
No, no, I mean, that, well, that's what you're pointing out.
This discussion is going.
Well, no, when you bring up these comments, it needs to be either it's, either we do it or we don't, it's a simple one. Um, that's all I'm looking for, uh, I, if someone says, by the way, the kindergarten, if I'm in Manchester, I can pay to go to the kindergarten, I take it that, that's what you mean.
I need help understanding why Glen Lake kindergarten is in this discussion dealing with the waterfront.
Because we're trying to find out what general, uh, public use is. The kindergarten is on the same piece of land that was open, that was purchased and used with this money, so, 'cause my, my issue is that I would like to see Glen Lake, that, that area there just opened up to the town for public use. And part of that would be, I've gone through it a few times.
It already is open for, open to school parking.
No, no, open, no, just to the town.
You would like to restrict the beach.
Okay, okay, 'cause we only have.
It's different than what you just, you want it limited.
We don't have a beach, we have a waterfront.
Okay, 'cause we only have eighteen parking spaces, is my issue. And so with the, so part of the question was that, that been arose, or the point that came up several times was the idea of, well, because HUD money was used, then at that point, it has to be open up to all general, you know, general public beyond the town. And with the school being there, we've kinda already said that, by the way, we will use some of this land for just town public use.
I consider it an important piece of information that Sue found out that, uh, the state would, uh, not stock the lake if it was, our waterfront was limited to residents only. That is a serious impact that we should consider.
Well, it should be considered, I'm also, it's not, it doesn't do me much good if we stock the lake and I, and I'm living in the town and I can't get to the lake. It wouldn't matter to me that way either. You follow where I'm at? In other words, if we don't have access for our people that are in town, and I'm waiting on a number for how many boats are registered in town and that won't include canoes and people who would like to kayak on it, et cetera. If we only have eighteen spots and only eight of them can park boats, I think it's what it is, if I'm not mistaken, seven or eight can park boat trailers, I'm not, I'm not that concerned about, you know, um, the idea of if we stocked fishing on it, if I can't, if people can't from the community get to the lake itself.
What about all the people that have docks on there, that won't have access to Stock Lake anymore?
That's one of the things that people will have to come up and speak about and that, that's what public hearing, you know, I mean, that's what public comment is about. But right now, if, if you talk to most people and I've talked, I've asked people about Glen Lake, I just ask, what are your thoughts about Glen Lake and the beach? And I'm, I won't, and you, I'm sure if you go out there, you're gonna get the same comment. It's dirty, it's filthy, I don't get access to it. That's gonna be the answer you're going to get. And I understand about the little, the fish and I, and I understand that, like anything else, everyone would like it perfect, pristine and fish. But the reality is, at this point in time, if we talk about that beachhead, you won't have anyone say, oh, yes, I like going there, it's clean, I have access to it. You won't hear that. You won't get a group of people to say that. That there is no access to that lake for the town and it's dirty. That's the reality. So, I'll just leave it at that at this point.
Any other comments?
We're not having any motion on it tonight, so.
No, we're not.
Just, just general discussion.
Yeah.
Next item?
List of transportation enhancement projects was approved by the DOT Commissioner. And congratulations to our rail trail committee for getting, um, their project, um, to cross Mass Road and Henry, the old Henry Bridge Road. Um, I think there's some highlighted areas to address in this grant. And Selectman Pierce did meet with the rail trail committee, um, last week and I don't know if he wants to add any more information on this.
Kevin?
Uh, briefly, the, uh, this grant that we've applied for is, uh, on the order of
Excuse me.
Two hundred and eighty thousand of grant money, which, uh, uh, we were ranked number one in the southern region. And, uh, I think I saw an email where we were number two at the state level. And, uh, also like to point out that the, the bridge over the Piscataquag River, coming from Manchester to eastern end of our rail trail, that bridge is part of the TE grant process, too. So, that's a go. So I'm, I'm happy for the development of the rail trail, both Manchester side and Goffstown side. And just to be specific, uh, the grant that we're receiving in this town covers four projects. Three of them are pedestrian activated stoplights, where the rail trail crosses very heavily traveled roads. And the fourth project is, uh, to put a pedestrian bridge over the. And the fourth project is, uh, to put a pedestrian bridge over the former Henry Bridge Road. Which is now just a twenty-three foot deep dry gully. I suspect that, uh, the state highway folks will be sending us administrative constructions on how to proceed from here. In preparation for the construction, which, uh, at the earliest could be next summer in two thousand and eleven. Is that the money's not releasable until this fall.
Does that include the bridge also, I mean, when I say the bridge, the, the, the trestle?
Manchester's bridge is in the same package.
So that'll be next year also.
It's, yeah, yes.
Okay, okay.
Unless, you know, um, if they wanted to fund the bridge upfront this summer and cross their fingers that the money will be on the table before the fiscal year ends. And then they could ask for reimbursement immediately, but that's their project.
Depends on Manchester's fiscal year too, so they may be in sync with the state's.
I do, I do have a question for you, you mentioned, um, three traffic lights?
Yes.
Are those on Mass Road?
Two are at Mass Road, at, where the ball, rail trail crosses near the Villa Ballfields.
Mm-hmm.
The second one is where the trail crosses back near Pro Landscape.
Yep.
Then within two hundred yards, it crosses that former Henry Bridge Road gully. And, uh, a few hundred yards after that, proceeding towards prison, crosses Henry Bridge Road. And the Henry Bridge Road would be the third site for a pedestrian activated stoplight.
Okay.
And the, the actual, the, the state highway department does have to approve the first two sites we mentioned, because it's a state highway.
Mm-hmm.
So they have to approve the, the scope of the project, the location of the project for site distances, pedestrian, cars. There's a lot of final design between now and.
Are they aware of this?
Yes.
So they, they are aware of it and they haven't.
Yes.
They haven't opposed it.
They're administering the grant.
I understand, I just wanna make sure that, that it's coordinated, I don't wanna, I hate to see going six months down the project and find out that some body in a different division has an issue.
Uh, there was a, a final review of all the applicants, uh, in the state. Kyle Querem and I were there supporting our project for the town, and that was one of my comments to the evaluation panel, that I, I would desire early and good cooperation from the highway depart, uh, state highway. For their, the, early determination of the nature of the crosswalk and the nature of the pedestrian stoplights.
Good, okay.
Cause we need, we need those determinations early, as you know, in order to do a successful kind of design. Don't want our town engineers spinning the wheels for three months doing a, a design only to say it won't work.
Right, good, any other comments, questions? Seeing none?
Just one follow-up to last week, um, I did talk to LGC and they think that even though we're not getting authority to expend, we should still have that public hearing to accept the FIRE, um, grant that we talked about last week. So I've scheduled that for May seventeenth so that we could give the meeting, meeting publishing requirements and the noticing requirements.
Okay, anything else in your report? Um, okay. Selacan's discussion, new business, I think we do have some new business coming from LGC and, uh, some legislation, uh, Sue, the town administrator and I has attended a, um, a dinner, uh, discussion last week up in Concord with LGC. And I'll let you explain.
Thank you.
What was presented to us or what we were informed of.
Right, and I also sent you emails today from the mayor of Dover as well as, um, another town administrator who was passing along his email.
Jesse Levine from New London.
New London, um, and basically what we heard about was last Thursday when we went to the LGC regional dinner. They announced that, that day in the legislature, a amendment was proposed to, uh, a bill, uh, to cap their reserve, to reduce their reserves for their, uh, health trusts and property liability trusts to, um, twenty-five million. And to return that money, you probably saw the article in the newspaper, and to return the surplus money to the taxpayers.
Well, it's called surplus.
That's what they call it, surplus, right, but the, I guess, the other side that we heard was that the industry standard is to have this kind of reserve so that you can remain solvent, because if you, and Steve, you're in the insurance industry, I don't know if you get into that end. But reserves are typically much higher than twenty-five million, so we don't know where the twenty-five million dollar idea came. Um, or why, but, uh, there is a hearing on it tomorrow morning at eight thirty. And they were encouraging municipalities to get involved. The trust uses, uh, the interest on that money to attempt to even out the premiums as they go forward. So that you don't get those spikes that many people get, um, in their insurance premiums, even in the private sector. They, their actuaries have estimated that this amendment goes forward and passes. That there is a possibility that if their claims exceed ten percent of the actuary's estimates, that they could become insolvent. And that wouldn't be a good thing for any of the municipalities or the taxpayers. Uh, and the trust has sa- saved taxpayers' money, communities' money, um, over the years and I'm not sure where this came from, and if it requires further study, then get, get further study, but to just arbitrarily pick a twenty-five million dollar number to cap reserves at, doesn't sound like a lot of thought went into it.
Thank you, any questions?
I'm just. I'm looking at the insurance rate i- in his letter from Dover and it's, it's thirteen point four percent, zero point three percent, one point six percent, three percent, fifteen point seven percent, how is that money used to?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Level that, those increases, cause I don't see any level, anything level there.
Well, I've talked to some private sector employers and they had twenty-three, twenty-four percent increases last year. Uh, and ours was much less than that. What I'm saying is that we were told by Mara Carroll that some of the, uh, interest on the reserves is used to even out the premiums, that they would have been worse if they hadn't used some of their interest.
And what is the rest of the interest used for?
I don't know. Stays in the reserves, I would imagine.
I know when I was, uh, a trustee up at PLT, we've always, we always had, uh, actuary reports, uh, professional companies that would come in and they would, uh, review all your financial statements. And they come up with the amounts, uh, recommendations for what you should have in your reserves now. I was not on health trust, uh, I was on PLT. And I would assume that health trust is done the same way, and from my understanding of people that I knew, who were trustees on the health trust, it was done the same way. And they came up with recommendations on how much you should have in for your reserves. It seems to me, uh, that there's a possibility here that, uh, in light of the downshifting that we've had from the state, that, uh, this, uh, might be an attempt to shift some of the focus from the actual state downshifting to finding somebody else to point the finger at. I guess one of the concerns that I have is that, uh, you're looking at the sponsors of, of who put in the amendments, um, I, I just have a concern is when you take people, uh, a political view and use that in light of, people who are professional actuaries which come up with the recommendation, uh, as to how much you should have versus, uh, to.
A politi- a, a political view as to what should be in there.
To successfully run an insurance business and remain solvent, how much do you need in reserve? And, uh, like you said, to have a political body discussing how much that number should be is. Is it their, not necessarily, is, I, I would think it's their game to get into.
Some of the questions, just in readings through the letter, some of the questions that I have is the state is self-insured, but they purchase reinsurance for the chance when, you know, for that time, which is fairly rare, that claims exceed, um, their reserves. What would be the impact of that? In other words, why doesn't the local government center do that versus utilizing the reserves? Where do the reserves come from, is that town money? In excess premiums that are building, in other words. I would like to see some information on what's the alternative, if the, if LGC purchased reinsurance, would our premiums be reduced by the amount that we're now overpaying to build up the reserves?
Well, if they got to, then you would not have the interest in there, uh, that helps flatten out the spikes in there, and then you would be also subject to those spikes too. So you'd have to take that into consideration. Reserves are something that's already there. My end is.
I just have some questions and I'm only getting one, one side here.
Well, I guess what I, where I'm coming, where I'm coming from on this is that the actuaries are used in, as industry standards. There was no difference on the actuaries that are used by LGC and any other insurance agency, company. They use the same actuaries, they use the same standards. And that's where I'm coming from on this, I mean, you, you have to have an industry standard and there's, there's no difference between them. Steve, you have any questions?
No. We deal with reserves and.
Actuaries and all of that.
It is what it is.
I guess also one of the requests was to, uh, if it's possible to have somebody up at the, testify at the, at the hearing tomorrow morning, and is anybody here that would like to go?
I couldn't testify intelligently, I don't know both, I don't know the whole, enough about it.
Uh, can we get an email out to our state reps though, you know, Senator? That okay with, is the board okay with that?
I am. Sue could draft that and just release it to us and if there's, she doesn't hear anything back. An hour or so tomorrow morning, she'll send it to the, our state reps.
I think the hearing's at eight thirty.
Ooh, really, really.
That's gonna be done tonight.
So much for my one hour.
Do you have the draft already ready?
No, I don't.
I guess the question, I do have a question now then, what would you hope to accomplish?
Is not to have them put a restriction on the reserves.
Okay, so you would like them to hold reserve at the current number, I mean, part of that, I, usually it's based upon the amount of people in the pool, um, their expected usage, I mean, there, there are people and.
Currently, there is, they follow industry standards and there's no legislative restriction on reserves. This is an attempt to put a restriction on the reserves.
So you just wanna say, you just wanna have, you're looking to accomplish that there's no restriction on the reserves?
Right.
For what purpose is, I guess.
Maintain industry standards so that we're, we, we remain solvent, that the, uh.
In the industry, in, if I can ask that question, because like I said, just, we're just seeing these bits and pieces. What would be the, the, what would be the amount that they would, that would, what dollar figure would be industry standard?
I think they relate it to a percentage of the premiums paid.
And so, cause we're just seeing a dollar figure and we haven't not talked percentage, I'm just kinda curious where it was going, that's all.
I just think that it's.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm.
That all of a sudden, this is, this is an amendment tacked onto a bill that has nothing to do with what this is. To try to get it passed through for, and the irony here is that you have LGC and Primex are the ones that are being, this is being focused on, they're being targeted. And historically, LGC and Primex have been competitors. So now you have two competitors in the field that are, are, you know, teaming up, so to speak. And Primex has been the biggest carrier for workers' comp, one of the biggest carriers for workers' comp. So if it's okay for us through the, send something forward to that, to that effect? I mean, she could send us all copies of what we could say.
I'm fine, yes.
Great, thank you. And, do we have any other new business? Not that I'm aware.
Just a quick question, maybe when Carl comes up later, it's, I was told the solar lights are not working at the intersection of Wallace.
Yeah, Dave sent an email this weekend, and Da- and Carl can address that when he comes up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Or Dave, you got a reply, I don't know if you wanna respond to.
No, I'll.
Let Carl, okay.
Uh, any old business? Committee reports, uh, economic development will be done next week, how about conservation commission?
Conservation commission met on the twenty-ninth, um, most of the business was rescheduled. We did have a discussion with Keith Martell of Sterling Homes regarding MAP nine, lot thirty-three, seven, forty-six, and sixty. Briar, Blackbriar Woods for a proposed nineteen lot open space subdivision. We scheduled a site walk for Saturday, May fifteenth. There are several areas, um, wetland crossings that were of concern to the conservation commission, areas that encroached within the hundred foot wetland setback. Finance report, the conservation commission current use fund is two hundred and eighteen thousand, twelve dollars and nine cents. Previous balance was two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three forty-nine, ninety-three. There was nine dollars and ninety-three cents in interest, and the difference between those two balances, twenty-four thousand and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents was the cost paid to obtain the Corbett easement that was paid out. And you have the official summary of our meeting in your, your packet as well, those were the highlights.
Any questions of Nick? Seeing none? Were there any other committee reports that anybody went to unexpectedly? Seeing none? We have a seven o'clock appointment with the public works director, we're a little early, are you expecting anybody else, Carl? If you're ready to go.
First of all, the answer to the question on the solar lights, what we've concluded is the manufacturer sold us a bill of goods. That the, uh, solar.
For the public, uh, we're talking about the two sets of solar powered lights where Shirley.
Wallace and Shirley and Norman and Shirley. And from as near as we can tell, what, what happens in the winter months, there's just not enough sunlight getting to the solar panels to keep the batteries charged, so eventually the batteries wear down and die and we have to order new batteries. The vendor has tried lowering wattage in the lights to see if it would cut down the draw on the batteries and, you know, they've tried a couple of different things. And it just seems like we're constantly having to go out there and replace batteries. Once we get into the summer months and the sun is out and more prevalent and higher in the sky, the batteries seem to charge and keep up. But the winter months, the, the things just die out, so. I don't know what we do other than keep trying to replace the batteries or eventually run power there.
Would we put a taller pole, raise the solar panels up higher?
I don't know, we could probably look at that, I don't, I don't know how high we'd have to go, they're pretty, you know, those trees are pretty tall around there. We did actually kinda talk about that, but we haven't gone out and looked at it.
I know we were, we're changing batteries there, how often are we changing the batteries?
I'd, I'd have to look at how often, but it's, I mean, we've gone through several sets.
Those lights have been there how long, I mean, roughly?
About three years.
Two years, three years.
Two or three years, I mean, when you say, just to get, are we, are we talking change?
Oh, no, Steve, I'll have to check.
You're fine, I don't, I don't know if it's once a year or, you know, that's what I'm trying to, curious that. Do we know the cost of the batteries or?
Hmm, not off the top of my head, but they're expensive, they're not, they're not the kind you get at the hardware store.
And then I'll ask the last question, was there a warranty with this, with, when purchasing?
Yeah, there's probably a warranty on the equipment, but this, this isn't an equipment, yeah.
Let me rephrase that, a warranty for not to. A warranty found out that.
There was no guarantee on performance.
Oh, very, thank you, that's what I'm looking for, thank you. There's gonna be someone I thought that, hey, this is gonna work in, in your environment.
Yeah, and, and you know, you see them out in the highway right of ways. You know, I see them up the main turnpike, not exactly those solar lights, but I see the solar panels charging, signs and stuff going up the main turnpike. So I think if you had wide open right of way where the sunlight could really get on it, you know, probably would, of course, I also noticed that on much bigger panels that I see out on the highway too, over what's on those signs, but. Anyway, we'll, we'll get up and look, and, you know, we also know the property owners, and maybe we could trim a tree or two if that would help, but.
I'm always glad to add another item to your whiteboard, Carl.
Yes, yeah. We actually crossed a few things off, so we have room for one more item.
Uh-oh, see that?
All right. Well, I understand we had a little snafu with the plan, so I, I hope the board got a chance to look at the plans that we feel are the final roundabout plans. Just for your FYI, we had a pre-construction meeting with Delory today. It was the only day this week we could all sit at a table. So everybody understood that everything we talked about today was pending tonight's discussion and tonight's decision, but we, we didn't wanna delay it anymore. We had a very good meeting, and a few things came out of that meeting that I'll actually discuss with the board a little bit later. But the plans, I believe, have addressed all of our concerns, at least all the concerns that staff has been aware of through both talking to you folks, as well as the butters, and our experience with the other roundabout. So I don't know if, if you have any questions or concerns, I mean, it, it's pretty much what we've been looking for, just, I mean, what we've been looking at right along with the, the detail provided now. We incorporated the, those options that you folks decided on a few weeks ago have been incorporated into this, and it was part of the final change order request number that came forward from Delory.
Are what options for those, just for review?
Well, we, we did the concrete sidewalk with the brick accent and granite curb in the roundabout itself. Uh, I believe we have concrete curb and asphalt sidewalk out to the high school. You know, we didn't carry the concrete all the way up to the high school, but I think it is concrete back to where the Worthley Hill road comes in, and let's just see, I think it is concrete, no, it's, at Worthley, it's all batuminous sidewalk. So the concrete walk is limited to the roundabout itself, but it is all granite curb. Yeah.
Right, that's what the plan showed.
Yep.
It's granite curb, how far, Carl?
Um, all the way to the high school.
All the way to the high school?
Yeah, but it's batuminous, batuminous sidewalk. One other thing I'd like to point out to the board, and we, we never got a chance to discuss this, I meant to discuss it with you last time. When we did the, and I, I forgot my visual aid too, when we did the roundabout in Grassmere, we proposed a different crosswalk treatment. It was a imprint grid, a high visibility imprint that gets pressed into the asphalt. And at the time, the board didn't feel the added expense was worth trying on a low traffic, low pedestrian traffic area like Grassmere. Uh, and we were told that, you know, let's look at that when we get down in one area that's more, you know, has more traffic. So, the estimate you have in front of you, we did add that in this plan, so it is an upgraded crosswalk system, so they will not be painted crosswalks. It's, um, we can, we can talk about patterns and colors, I suppose, but it's called the Durotherm imprint, and what they do is they take a, a grid, and it basically gets rolled into the hot asphalt, so you end up with a, a thick grid embedded in the asphalt, and it, obviously it'll last as long as the wear course on the asphalt will last, and you don't have to constantly go out and repaint it. It's like a, a high visibility system. So the only thing we will have to paint are white lines on either side of the crosswalk, like borders, but the imprint in the center of the crosswalk will, will always be visible. A good example of it is if, I don't know if you've experienced the rail trail that Manchester paved last year, but if you go down that rail trail, uh, from the arena over to the, the Friends, the bridge over the, over to the ball field, they use that system on all their crosswalks where they crossed, and it's, it's an excellent, very visible crosswalk system. So, you know, that's, that's in here, I wanted to point that out. Other than that, the design is pretty straightforward, single lane roundabout, very, very similar to Grassmere with the exception of, on this application, the island, the truck aprons will be raised. In Grassmere, they were all put mounted flush, so people can short circuit the roundabout and kinda skirt right across it. These will be, have an inch and a half lip, um, on all the truck aprons. What else is significantly noteworthy?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Carl, I see a mobilization charge of almost eighteen thousand dollars.
This is on the, on the change order itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why would we have a mobilization charge if they're already on site working?
Well, they, they have, they're talking about bringing three crews in to get this done on the schedule that we put forward. If you look at the schedule, which you also were provided tonight, both the South Mass Drainage Project and the Roundabout are overlapping simultaneous projects, so it's not like they're gonna do one and the other, they're gonna bring in three crews, and have three crews working shoulder to shoulder to meet our time deadline. We also talked about a couple of other things, just to, we're gonna try to do weekly updates of the schedule on the website, just so people have an idea. There is gonna be, what we approved today, we, at the pre-con is a one-way traffic pattern where we'll have inbound traffic coming into the village, will, um, be shifted to one side of South Mass, whichever side they're working on, they'll shift to South Mass, uh, and the outbound traffic will be detoured up around, well, we'll use, we'll probably use East Union Street when we have, we're in that section from Pine Ridge to, uh, East Union, is just that little section, cause it's an easier detour. Once, once that, once we're outside of that and we're into the other section of South Mass, we'll send the outbound traffic up Merrill, around Merrill and down, which is a long detour, but it's, it's, um, it'll get the outbound traffic away from the job. In doing that, they can have three crews working simultaneously on, on the same side of the road. Couple of other things we talked about for time-saving measures is perhaps allowing them to begin the, the mildly intrusive work in South Mass ahead of school being out. And when I say mildly intrusive, there's some drainage work on the south side of Mass, of South Mass, which is the Pine Ridge side of South Mass. The pipe is not very deep, it's, um, so they, you know, they would have the shoulder restricted, but with traffic control, they should be able to manage traffic, they'd have a very limited sight disturbed, so they should be able to maintain the flow of traffic, and we didn't see a problem with that. We thought that the, the real school restriction should be focused more on the intersection and the heavy crossings down, down near, near the intersection. We had the truck center at the meeting today, as well as the school district and the police department, and everybody, and everybody seemed comfortable with that. The other thing they asked me about was if it appears, you know, we only have a two month window to do all this work, so early on, if, if they get into problems that they really, uh, get nervous about hitting the schedule, they asked about the possibility of working later into the night, or doing some of the work at night. Uh, I told them that I couldn't authorize that, and that they would have to come to this board, um, and you would more than likely have to have a public hearing, so it's not something they could come to us on, on Monday and expect to start it on Tuesday. So they're aware of that restriction, they're aware of the noise ordinance, however, they did kinda throw that out there as, we're gonna watch this schedule very carefully, and if, if it looks like they're gonna have trouble meeting the deadline, they may approach us to talk about a whole nother shift of guys working on a night shift.
What would those hours be, Carl, did they talk about that?
We'd get into that, that level of detail. So as far as, back to your mobilization, Nick, there is, you know, there is additional crews coming in. Mobilization is also where oftentimes contractors will put, um, the cost for things like bond and insurance and all those things that are required for the job, and even though we already have a bond for the South Mass job, they have to enlarge that bond to include this work, so there's costs, thousands of dollars in cost to carry those bonds that we require to do this kinda work. And typically, uh, that's where that money is put, is in the mobilization charge, because they get reimbursed pretty much upfront for the, the outlay of cash for all their bonds and everything. So it didn't surprise us to see a mobilization number. That's a fairly low number for a job this size, I mean, eighteen thousand dollars is not a lot of money. Uh, I would also point out that, um, if the board recalls when we came in with our road plan discussion, we had not finalized numbers with Delory, there were several subcontractor numbers that they had not gotten yet, so we had to estimate those numbers and plug them in for Delory. This in total comes out about thirty thousand dollars lower than that estimate that you approved a couple of weeks ago as part of the road plan. So, uh, we're quite pleased with the number, we think it's a very competitive, uh, number. The, um, the, the fact that we'll have one contractor in that work zone is, in our mind, very, very, um, attractive. It's a very tight window, and these guys seem very energetic to, to hit our, to do it for us and get it done. So we're, we're definitely recommending going this way, it looks like it'll work quite well.
Any questions, Carl?
And what are you looking for from this, Carl?
Well, we need approval of the set of plans, if this is what you want us to build. We need approval of the change order if you want them to begin putting the bonds in place and getting ready for, I think they're proposing beginning work the week after next, May fifteenth or above, May seventeenth, whatever the week after next is. So they're ready to hit the ground running if we go ahead and approve this.
Just a quick question, not like a cart before the horse thing, where are we with easements?
The, um, we, we haven't signed any easements, they wanna see these final plans, which will get approved tonight, so once we have these, the documents are pretty much ready, you know, the, the documents for them to sign, we have to go and answer questions for one of your butters still, but a lot of their questions hinged on what's in this final plan. So I, I think we're okay, I mean, I feel like we're okay, it's just, we get approval of this, we go sit down with them one more time, and hopefully we come back with signed easement.
That's, that's what we anticipate. Any other questions? So we need a motion to approve the final design. Won't we start with that?
The final, yeah.
Yes, I propose that motion.
The second? You're shaking your head, yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And next issue was the change order.
The other, just a little caveat, cause it affects the way you make your motion, this technically is supposed to be signed by Delory Construction before we sign it. They have not had a chance to get a signed copy here yet, so if your motion was to read to authorize the chair to sign it, I expect to see a signed copy of this tomorrow, and we could hunt down the chair, wherever the chair is, and, and get it signed that way, if you.
With the vice chair, the chair's not available.
Unless you're going south.
How far south?
Prestersby, New Orleans.
Philly is south, who you know?
See eye on the way by.
Well, I make a motion that, uh, the chair, he authorized the signed change order number three to the South Mass Road Drainage.
Or vice chair.
Or the vice chair. Subject to the town's receipt of a signed copy.
End of motion. Okay, is there a second? Do we have a second on the motion? I'll second.
The discussion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, here's where I guess the discussion piece comes out, so I was waiting for a second. And from my, from my understanding, we, we were going forward saying, let's see what they would come back with as a price. And then the other question that was on the table the last time we spoke about this was, once we see this, would we, would we look at and say, do we wanna go out for bid? So I guess that's where we're sitting here today at this point, saying, are we gonna accept this proposal or go out for bid, is that my understanding at this point, when we do this proposal?
You're accepting this as the only bid? It was change related to the existing contract?
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, once we accept it, it means that we've decided that we will not go out and do a formal bid process, correct?
That's correct.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, that's why we're, that's why we're sitting here at this moment, because we're waiting to see that, to see the number. And you said the start date was when, if this, if this was approved?
The start date for this would be, for this change order would be after school, end June twenty-third.
You might do some non-intrusive.
It's more the drainage, the drainage work, the roundabout work would wait till.
Steve, the, the schedule's further back in your packet.
Yeah, it's.
When you say the roundabout work was, will wait, what does that mean?
Well, the, the intersection, the, the change order addresses the intersection and the intersection of Worthley and the work on Wallace, all of which we wouldn't try to do until school is out.
So that work, uh, near Pine Ridge that you talked about earlier is part of the South Mass Drainage, okay?
So that's already approved, it's already in their contract. But they're, they're holding off a lot of that work for the same reason, till traffic lets out for the summer.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Did we, did we need to talk about the schedule anymore, or?
Not the what?
But before you run, if I could ask one question? I've been getting a couple of emails from people, Lynchfield, Dennis, and one in particular, I won't say his name, but he's wondering when that, to have we, he, he's been getting diff, what I, what I understand, different answers regarding that the paperwork has gone forward to DES, has it gone out? And that'd be a yes or no question, cause he's got different answers.
Yes, it, it has gone out.
When did that, you mailed it out with it this week, or it must've been recently?
What, what are we talking about, the STAG grant?
Yes.
Yeah, the STAG grant has been applied for four months.
Cause he's getting diff, this gentleman, this gentleman says he's getting different.
Well, I mean, to clarify all questions, the STAG grant was applied for, I don't remember, six weeks, two months ago, and it's been a while. We made the decision, there are a lot of different ways that we can, uh, when we put together the specs, we brought them as far as we could, there were a lot of, um, issues that we discussed, legal contractual issues, liability issues for the town entering private property and doing this work. We met with Bill Drescher, we met with the state, we talked about all our concerns. The state was then gonna carry that, our concerns, to EPA, and as they reviewed the STAG application, they were also gonna be reviewing our concerns and how the best way to award the STAG grant, fulfill the requirements of the STAG grant, and protect the town from the liability problems that we foresaw. We can't really do anything further until we get the grant award from EPA, which is what we're all waiting on. That grant award will lay out in it the requirements that we need to fulfill the grant. So, we're at the point, this, the, the bid specs for the project have been brought to the point where as soon as we get that grant award, and we know, yes, we have it, we'll see what their requirements for the public bidding process are laid out, we can incorporate that into the document and get it right out to bid. So we're poised, um, I communicated with EPA and DES just the end of last week, and it's still, we're working on it, you know, there's no definitive, you'll hear from us next week, but we just says we're working on it, it's in process. definitive, you'll hear from us next week, but it just says, we're working on it, it's in process. So, until we get that award.
The only notice we've received is that there's no environmental impact, you know, that's the only thing, but we haven't received the stag award yet.
Right.
So, until we receive that, we don't want to bid.
Until we know what they're gonna accept to meet their public procurement requirements, we, we really can't put it out to bid or go any further, we really have to just.
Yeah, we won't know their conditions until we receive the notice of award.
Okay, and having not gone down this road, what we, and I realize I can't, I'm not trying to hold you anything, but this gentleman's asked me, 'cause he's, he has water problems, you know, quality of water, I understand. I can understand his issue for some of us, we don't, some of us, they, in his case, he did. And he's trying to make plans of what he should do.
What, here's what I foresee happening, and don't hold me to it, 'cause we gotta wait and see. What I foresee happening is, we will go through a RFP process and identify three, uh, with unit prices, three potential contractors that people can contract with. There, the unit prices for the work will be laid out in the contract, there may even be contract documents, but the contract will be between the homeowner and the contractor. The town will not be the owner of the project. The reason for that is, as a municipality, we enjoy a lot of liability protection for work that we do. The minute we step outside the right of way, onto private property, we step out of that liability protection. We would be taking on all the liability. We're working down there in a flood zone, the first thoughts that cross my mind is, what, what's gonna happen when we start poking holes in people's foundations and run a water services into their basement, you know, how do we handle that liability? We have no protection against that, so that became a huge, huge concern. So, what, the way we're envisioning setting it up is the contract will be between homeowner and contractor, using our shortlist of contractors that we identified through a competitive process. They will meet with one or all three of those contractors to work up a, an actual price in a contract. The town will serve as the fiscal agent to satisfy the grant, so they would come in with their forty-five percent check and a signed contract from the contractor with the, here's the amount of the work, here's our deposit check. Contractor would go out and fulfill the work and then present the town with the bill that the work's been completed and we would just process the payment.
Question, how, when you, when you say you're gonna provide a list of contractors through a competitive bid, are you gonna set the rate that they can charge?
No, they will, they will, I would envision we'll get a whole bunch of contractors that bid on this. And like we would normally go through any bid process, we would identify maybe the three low, the three qualified low bidders. All right, here's your three contractors, bing, 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 and then when the homeowners, whoever they are, say, okay, I wanna go forward, they'd be given this shortlist. By doing it that way, we satisfy the EPA procurement requirements, that we've gone through some kind of a competitive process and that we're getting the best price possible for the work.
And we'd make sure the grantor is okay with this process before we.
Yeah, that's, that's the part that we need them to.
Right, 'cause I, I was gonna say, if, if one company says, I'm gonna do it for five dollars a linear foot and your second next person says, I'm gonna do it for ten dollars a linear foot, why would anybody choose the more expensive one? And if they do, why would that qualify for the grant when there's a less expensive?
The grantor may, may decide that their reimbursement is gonna be based on a low bidder.
A low bidder.
Well, and, and, and here's the reason, the reason is, for the same reason, I don't wanna poke a hole in somebody's foundation, I don't wanna sole source them to one vendor and force them into a contract with one guy.
Well, I understand that.
By giving them the choice, I, I agree with you, if, if, if I'm Joe homeowner and one guy's five bucks a foot more than the other guy, I'm probably not gonna use him. But it gives them the option to talk to multiple contractors.
Could you not, and maybe that might be something to ask, if, if the low bidder comes in at five dollars a linear foot to run the pipe, could we not set the price at five dollars a linear foot and any other contractor from that point on that would match that price could be on the list?
Yeah, it's possible, I didn't explore it, it's possible.
How long is this offer on the table for the homeowners?
That again is an EPA, how long they s- that stag grant, if it has an end date, will be determined with the award.
And it may be a first come, first served in terms of when the money's out, the money's out.
That could be too.
Yeah.
'Cause it's, it might be a fixed amount of money and you don't know how much to.
And we had, you know, we had lengthy discussions on all this when we're trying to sort it out with them, or this, this is one of those odd, odd, no one's ever done this. You know, it's not like we could draw on another example, uh, and so we're really, yeah, we tried and tried and tried. And, you know, like somebody like Manchester Water Works, they just don't enter private property because they step outside the liability protection.
Which will be, which will be interesting too, because we haven't received the notice of award. Now, DES doesn't seem to think there'll be any problem with that, but this was also outside the realm for stag. So, we don't wanna get too far down this road until we get the notice of award from stag.
Carl, the other possibility is, once you have a low bidder, is that the town would reimburse up to that amount if an individual wanted to use a different contractor.
That's not bad too.
So, they're free to use anybody they want and they're only gonna get reimbursed at that low bid price.
And that, that, what's good about that is, 'cause that way, that allows you to give them three names.
And they, or they can go outside, they get anybody they want.
But you, we're not, we're not, we're not giving them, we're not steering them to one particular contractor.
We're trying to provide them the best price in economy of scales by going out for everyone, but you're right, they could contract. If they know someone that bid on it and they've had him do work at their house before and they're more comfortable with that person, they can, but the rate is, with the low rate.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call DES tomorrow and just kick that around, 'cause we.
So, I'm gonna go back to my original question, from a planning point, if, if, if that's, if that's someone who's waiting right now, are we talking the end of summer, are we talking fall, I mean, obviously this is getting drawn out much longer than people.
Let me tell you, I, I have no control over.
No, I, I understand, I'm not, I'm not beating up, I'm just trying to get a practicality.
Once we got the grant award from EPA, I think we could probably have a big packet on the street within a couple of weeks. We'd probably have a four-week window with a week for award, so from whenever we got DES or, you know, the word that, yes, we have the stag grant, it's been awarded, we know those conditions, you know, my guess is we're looking at like a seven-week window. So, say we got, uh, mid-May, I, I don't need to stay, but, uh, mid-May.
Go ahead. Yeah, they won't have.
Looking at, you know, having, having work be able to be started towards the end of July. But it all hinges on when we get that award letter from.
You're not holding anything, so end of summer would be optimistic if everything goes well.
Yeah, if everything goes well. And just to point out too, this work is not in the right of way, so there's absolutely no reason, if we have a mild winter, why is this work gonna be done all next month? Out of the right of way, it's all.
Just hearing that sounds more like fall now.
Well.
That's okay, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, just so when, when people talk to me, that, you know, there's certain people that's like, they were, they were, you know, obviously, communications have changed over the course of time and so, all right, so.
Very, uh, it, I know it seems like a straightforward thing to do, but it's a very complicated project.
Carl, we've heard this, uh, from you before, this, uh, uh, this project is, uh, new to everybody, it's not been done before. So, uh, congratulate you on being on the innovative edge of municipal engineering.
I won't take the credit for this one, Rick Skarinka's ramming this down my throat so hard.
And we've just been putting up the liability.
Yeah, that's right, this is something, for whatever reason, DES really.
I'm sure your staff, you are up to it.
Oh, we'll, we'll get there, but it's, uh, this is, I mean, obviously we wanna help the residents, but this one really is DES pushing, pushing, pushing.
Megan's done a nice job, by the way.
Yeah.
And they've had, and they've had that since one now, DES, they've had it for what, oh, two weeks, three weeks?
Oh, February, the first week of February is when we apply for the stag grant.
Yeah.
All the paperwork went up in February?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they had follow-up questions on environmental impact, which Carl went back the next day on that and then we got a notice that there's no negative environmental impact.
Yeah. You know, and we get regular feedback that they're supposedly working on it and it just.
Okay, any other questions, Carl?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Okay, do we have any other public business?
I don't.
No, then, um, we have non-public and then we'll be adjourning. Um, we have non-public session RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, A and B, do we have a motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, roll call.
Yes.
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 We are in non-public session.